For those of you who didn't hear before, Kyle is going to be a little bit late.
Okay.
Thanks for
Recording.
Thank you, Margaret. I'll go ahead.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's December 10th, 2024. This GBOS session regarding the procedures. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meeting. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I call this meeting to order at 3:04. I'm Brianna Sullivan, co-chair. Brian, would you please read the land acknowledgement?
I would be glad to. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors acknowledges the Indigenous Peoples of Alaska, whose land we reside on. The community of Girdwood situated between the areas known to be Denaina and Oltik homeland respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be part of a wider community that seeks to maintain a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for present and future peoples.
Thank you. Let's do roll call in the room. I'm Brianna Sullivan, co-chair, fire department supervisor.
Brian Burnett, Parks and Rec supervisor.
And online?
Kelly Akonik. Rhodes.
Mike Edgington, co-chair Housing and Economic Development.
Thank you. And also in the room?
Jennifer Wingard.
Any, thank you, everyone is here. Any disclosures this afternoon? Hearing none, I will unchain a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve.
I have a second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll go by assent. The agenda is approved. All right. Thanks, everyone, for being here. This is the agenda for the rules and procedures. I feel like I will be fine to introduce number one, which is review of the changes proposed. And I will say that Mike and I, volunteering to work on this, have spent hours already. And then the closer we came to a real meeting and more other projects going on, we really wanted the guidance and approval from the board first on how to really start this and tackle it. And then we'll get way into it and spend a lot more time and give you a bunch to edit or go from there. So that's really, I'm hoping we can have a productive work session regarding the questions. I've proposed more of a narrative and then Mike has a chart on the second page. So, and then if you haven't had time to read them, you can just scan my, the top page there. It'd be great to come up with, these are just draft goals, but, or priorities, those four things. We could come up with three or four that we all think are great to go for, like a roadmap or a reference point for all of our edits. And then how we like the organization, because Mike had some great ideas too, but they're, there are just lots of ideas. So, Mike, would you like to share some of your thoughts?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was thinking of looking at the second section of kind of what we have to change, first of all, but if you want to do it different ways. So I will actually be there in about five to 10 minutes. But just to quickly go through the, the chart on the second page, what I was looking at is there are things, really, there are three issues, three questions we have to ask about each part of the rules and procedures. The first one is, does it follow what we have to legally do? And in many parts, it doesn't. It either duplicates what we have to legally do, or it doesn't reference it, or in some cases, it contradicts it. That's in terms of both statute and code. So for example, there isn't, there's mention of the Open Meetings Act, but there's also descriptions of things in the rules and procedures which don't match the Open Meetings Act. So we should update those. And then the second column is, does it reflect what we actually do now? And again, in many cases, the answer is no. There's a set of things in there, like for example, public hearings, which we don't do. There's, you know, various other things in terms of organization of meetings and the way we, the way we organize things between meetings. And then the third thing is, what do we want to do? We had a discussion a while ago, following the, the discussions with Forica and to a lesser extent, I suppose, with, with AML, about things we can do better in meetings in particular and ways we can manage business better. So there's also things we want to change. So I think we have to look at everything in terms of those three questions. So in some cases, obviously, the first column, if it doesn't match what we're legally required to do, we have to update and change. If it doesn't match something we're doing now, but we want to effectively go back to what the rules say, then obviously that's fine. But I think in many cases, the challenge really is how much do we reflect what we do now versus what we want to do? Should we write the rules and procedures for, you know, the operation of GBOS in a couple of months' time? Or should we write it for the operation of GBOS now and then basically go through another set of changes when we want to change things like meeting agendas? So I think that's kind of the big picture question that sort of sits above all of these. But in general, there's actually quite a few, quite a few places where, where the rules and procedures need fairly significant updates. So I think it's more than just a small edit. It's a, it's a fairly significant rewrite in many places.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, this chart I found was really helpful also as kind of a rubric to go through every single section the way that it's structured right now. But there is also ways we could totally reorganize it. So I'd be willing to hear from anyone that has, have thoughts before the meeting or even now.
I have a quick staff question. My sincere apologies. I forgot my copy. Do you have any extra copies of the rules and procedures?
I haven't made any copies of the rules and procedures, but I'd be happy to go and make one for you.
No, no, that seems like
Here, I brought it, brought the item that you had emailed me yesterday, just to let you know that there's another item in the packet than what you would have seen when it was posted yesterday. So this is something that Jennifer had sent over. So, yeah, would you like for me to go and?
I almost think it would be faster for me to just, I switch to listening to this and run home and get it because I'm like three minutes away.
Well, so minutes aren't actually required for work sessions because you're not voting on anything. So I actually have plenty of time as long as you guys can manage.
Oh, okay. I'm really sorry.
And also in the room, I have this one, if anyone wants to sit towards, Brian was going to be looking at this copy, but audio is better right there, so.
And you know what? I'm just realizing that it might be, it might be online too.
Okay.
I'm kind of hoping it's online.
I think it is. And then
Yeah, the copy of it on the main GBOS page is the link there on the right.
Thank you. Thank you. But I didn't realize, maybe, no, yeah, anyway, all good.
Great.
So I'm sorry, returning to your question, what was your question?
Basically, just from, from the starting points, we both jumped in. Where would the rest of the body like to go today, or if you had any thoughts before today's meeting or right now, to go around first, if you had anything?
Well, I have one thought I don't know about Brian, but it's you guys, since you and Mike have been through this so much, maybe, maybe one place to start would be the quote unquote easier changes, the ones that don't get into kind of overall philosophy things as much.
And, okay, thank you. Brian, did you have anything?
I would, I agree that the easier ones would be nice to tackle first off, especially as it relates to kind of our legal duties and things that are, that we need to bring in line with code. Those are, and then once we have that, that base foundation together, then I think we can build off because we can say, okay, this is satisfying code. Yes, it does. So then yes means step forward, no means back to, you know. It seems to me that's a
A priority. Okay, thank you. Kelly, you're unmuted. Did you have something to?
No, I just didn't want to be shooting for the mute button all the time, but I, I agree with going for the easy, obvious. And, and if there's things that are code related and then anything that might be controversial, kind of holding it till the end. You know, do the 80/20 approach. I think that was suggested, but I agree with that.
Okay, thank you, everyone. That's great. And since Mike's on his way, we could go back to, because if it's in code and it's pretty clear, then Mike and I can pick different parts of the rules and procedures and see if it matches. And if it doesn't, change it to code because we are, as this Board of Supervisors elected, supposed to be going by code. And that would take precedent and then edit that. But on mine, I asked, for example, would we all agree that we would like more efficient meetings? I think Foraker definitely highlighted that. And if I'm cleaning up something, do I want to suggest that in our rules and procedures? Then part of the more efficient idea is the less redundancy. Number one and two could kind of be the same. Cleaning up well, more efficient is actually less redundancy. And then we don't have to have these four that I just put out here, but if anyone else has overarching, overarching goals that they would like to see with the changes. And then if you don't have anything immediately, then the way things are going now, or is there anything that stands out that you'd like to change?
Brianna, I'd like to say that the, the four priorities that you've set out definitely are, are some, you know, some of the stepping stones moving, moving forward and going through this process. And I would suggest that they all have equal priority, if you will, not just because one is at the top of the list, gives it more priority than, than the other points below it.
Thank you, Brian. I, I did actually field it for all. I did number them, but that was not in prioritizing order.
Actually, I think if there, I think if there was a priority, it would probably be your rubric. And specifically, does it match code? I would improve that on the list of things, and it might actually be number one. And then the others can be equal. We have to match code.
Yeah, yes. Yep. Mike and I each had ideas of how to start it and then kind of hash it out for lots of editing. So in the code, it's a very dense document, which would take every single piece to go back and forth on.
So, so then the question is, where do we find the code that we're matching?
There's a link online. It's AMC, it's on Muni. I've searched it, just Muni, Anchorage, Muni code. And then they have a really well organized spread of left to right of like the chapters and then the topics. And you can search in it too and just type something like Open Meetings Act or Ethics. And then you can find the chapter and
Okay.
Basically the law that we're subject to. And there, it's not on all of these. There's just a few pieces that we would definitely can easily change, I think. Mike, are you close?
I'm just walking into the library. I'll be there in less than a minute.
All right, we had all this. And then the, the three kind of, for me, priorities and more easy approaches were on this page. Public hearings, because we don't do it the way our rules and procedures say. And then removing the redundancy and new and unfinished business was something I've always liked. Instead of calling it old business, just unfinished business. That's why I have public hearings next. It's just an example on this page.
Mike, we're in the room. Sorry about that.
A few probably heard so far, or just very in favor of going through the rubric for our edits as we dive into it. And I'm not sure what
What we could do is start with codes, and this is just my analysis. So everyone should take the opportunity to have a look through if they agree. But if we start in the first column, again, if we start from the current document, section 1A, which is kind of the background, is pretty close. But there's probably some references out to current code and some discussions about where we actually stand with community councils. EBSA is probably some clarification of language, but it's not substantial change. One big change is membership. There's a lot of details and a number of things have changed in code about the membership, how people can be subject to recall, what their attendance requirements are, et cetera. So we have a set of rules in our rules and procedures which don't match code. So I guess one of the questions is, do we just say, go and check code? Or do we actually say, go and check code and provide a summary, a brief summary of rules and procedures? At the risk that the summary might not be completely accurate, but it will be kind of at least a pointer. If it's roughly like this, code is the reference.
All right. So we just reference code in A, B, C, D, E, F, whatever it is.
Yeah, it's in two, it's in two, section two, article one.
Okay. Membership, I see.
So I mean, we can say GBOS consists of five people, but the, the way we're voted, how absences, how a vacancy gets declared if people aren't attending meetings, how recall works is another method that's there. How recall initiatives like assembly work, which is another method. All of those probably should be references to code rather than written out here. And again, what we have written out here is quite right.
This is up here too. After, this is still membership, appointment of, we could
Right. And again, the declaration of vacancy and how seats are reassigned, that's defined in code. What we have in our document here is, I think, quite right. So I think this is a, you know, in principle, this is pretty easy because everything we're, everything we're covering in our rules and procedures is defined in code. So it's really just whether we want to say, you know, go and see these references or whether we want to put those references in as the definitive answer and then put a brief summary of what that means. As a, so this document can stand by itself, although you would still then have to check details in code.
So using municipal code, like as footnotes and then if you
Basically, yeah, yeah, yeah. Saying, you know, this is so, some roughly writing, you know, we have the five members who are elected through municipal election. There's several ways in which seats can be vacated voluntarily by resignation, by a recall action, by, by voter recall action, by an assembly recall action, and by vacancy, by non-attendance. And then the details of exactly what the criteria are, what the process is, can be in code. And then also the same thing about the appointment, because if there isn't an election set, then it's done by the mayor. We can, we can choose, we can notify the mayor's office. And we can definitely make a recommendation, but it's actually the mayor's decision.
And then after, membership is committees in Article Two.
Yeah. So committees, I think that's a separate issue. I don't think there's anything in code. There's nothing in code at all about committees. They don't have, they don't have any, they're not, they're not covered. The committees that are covered in code are the ones that sort of are described in code, have a statutory basis. And what we have is committees, GBOS, which are not described in
I think all of these we update for sure because they are outdated.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's other updates there about, you know, what we do, what people may want to do. But there's no code implication, I think, for the committees. Except for clarification, what we probably should do in there is clarify that committees are not subject to the ethics reporting rules, but they are subject to Open Meetings Act. And then, I don't know if we want to try and describe what that actually means in a committee where every single member of the community could be in. Meetings, we have some, we should again, reference and probably include a cheat sheet from the disclosure requirements because the disclosure requirements in this document are quite right, quite up to date.
Hang on, are we discussing this step by step or?
I was just going through summarizing, but I can, we can, whichever you prefer.
No, that's right.
Oh, I think Jennifer had one suggestion for the, for the
Well, it's kind of a
End of the, a membership.
Right. But it's a move point if we're rewriting that whole section.
Right. But if, if you wanted to say it has to do with Article 1D or what, to do with the mayor appointing.
Actually, I'm going to accidentally end up, I'm going to end up in discussion. So why don't we just skip for now, like, now that I understand what we're doing.
So to committees, disclosure requirements and, wait, I said committees, we're in meetings, meetings, sorry.
For committees, we specify there aren't disclosure requirements. Committees are not, committees of GBOS are not subject to ethics laws. Requirements of that, but they are subject to Open Meetings Act. Then when we go on to meetings, I think we're pretty close. The one thing that's not, we're both in meetings and offices, is the document, as we've got written, still kind of assumes there's a volunteer staff member being secretary. And I think what we need to do in this section, probably as a new section, is clarify the role of staff versus the role of super. I think that would be a lot easier if we have, if we have at least written down what we think the clerk of any action is. And then all the way through, when it refers to the secretary, we have an administrative officer to call in that role. Okay. That's really, officers, I think, I read it, it talks about chair, but then it also mentions we can have co-chairs.
Yeah, second A, doesn't it? It's our, the board's choice, boss's choice.
I was just thinking, that's clear, clearer that we can have both and then use both terms elsewhere. Areas of responsibility, let's see, sorry, I'm going into this section. Areas of responsibility, there's nothing in code about that. Voting, again, we have to, we have to make sure we're consistent with the ethics code about refusals. So that, sorry, the difference between the earlier reference to the ethics code in this one is voting is about specific cases. We also have ethical obligations in terms of disclosing, you know, financial conflicts and things like that outside of specific items. So any contracts we're involved in from the municipality. Voting is specifically about the, any conflict in a item in front of us. How we do that, it should probably also reference some of the, some of the advisory opinion from Ethics Board. We also have, we have some code in there, we have, not code, we have a procedure for dealing with ties. And it's not quite clear to me. I think we've only used it once or twice. Basically, if you have a two-two tie, then you can revote. But it doesn't say how you revote is the requirement. Someone calls a revote, does it have to be seconded? I don't know. It's not that clear. That isn't typical. Normally, a tie would mean something fails, but there would be an option of doing reconsideration. So reconsideration, as it's described elsewhere in the document, needs to also be improved, as clearly.
Tie, yeah.
Is
And whether or not
Yes, it's not clear what that really means, and that's not that neutral.
Yeah.
But it is a small body. So I mean, I guess, you know, two-two wouldn't be that, probably never one. Okay, that's on floating.
For tie votes, Robert's rules has a way to do it too. So we could use that. And their document says that if our rules and procedures conflict, we need to have a process.
We just, we need to, you should just explicitly say. And then the outcomes, the section in there about outcomes as well. And that ties in sort of bit at the very beginning about structure of, I don't think it's that clear, but we have, LUC performs a very specific purpose, which does relate to code, or at least it relates to the provision of community council. And that's not what the other committees do. So there's a couple of places where it's, where, for example, the outcome of voting, the implication is that we have this process that happens, whatever we do, and it's only actually for LUC. So that, that probably needs to be clarified. We have this whole section on public hearings, which we don't really do at all. The approach we're taking, we've been taking for years, is public can speak pretty much on any item at any time, whether it's introduction or discussion, even deliberation. So we don't have these separate public hearings. I think there's a separate question about whether we should do something closer to that and make it clearer when there's a period where kind of, you know, things could be more focused. I think that's a broader discussion that we can hold that to the end. Presentations, again, doesn't really touch on code. Budget does. You should be clearer on the timeline there specifically for the CIP process. But we're still not quite clear how that works anyway. So there's kind of a question about how we, how we best match the, the rest of the municipality in terms of proposing capital projects. And it's getting better, but it's still not quite there. There's a section for vacating rights of easements, which I've never read. I don't know that we use that or need it, so that might be something we want to remove. And I don't know if it's consistent with code. I haven't checked through it. Correspondence, emergency pit, and emergency permitting might be another thing, which I don't think is necessary anymore. There are processes within the Muni that we can use. I don't think that section is necessary. Correspondent from GBOS, that's, there's nothing that touches code there. The amendment's the same, except for conditional use permit, the conditional use permit. When I read it, I think there are a couple of things in there that look like they differ slightly from the process in Title 21. So I think that's just to make sure we do properly. Okay. So really, the, the easiest one is membership. I can pretty much, thrown away, refer to code and do, do a summary description of what code says. And then the areas around voting and meeting for ethics requirements are the other areas where I think we need to fix the things. And that's really the, I'm sorry, and the very beginning, the, the purpose of LUC, how we're structured, big picture, what GBOS does. And I'm, you know, this is based on my analysis. I've not checked every single piece of code or you heard, not read every single section of the, of the rules and procedures because there are, well, I skipped. But, you know, if other people think there's other conflicts, then we should, maybe we should take, take the opportunity to look through and see if you see anything else that doesn't. So my sense of these are pretty controversial, but
Would you say, Mike, the land use, like their mission, that's not under membership?
No, no, at the very beginning, there's what GBOS is. And that's where we, we need to have a really clear, clear, the clearest we can, description of what GBOS is, how it relates to community council, by LUC as well. I think that's important.
Right. Because it's not mentioned here.
Right. It's mentioned somewhere in the document, but I think it's not in touch. So I think that's section, the very, section, section one is basically what, what are we, what we for? Certain minutes, I just want to check quickly. There was something else in another set of notes I had, something else I was going to suggest we added.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, the question is, is where is the, where is the executive summary of the Girdwood Board of Supervisors?
Well, I might suggest we don't dive into that right now. It sounds like maybe the easiest thing might be membership, unless somebody else has another idea. Trying to think.
Yeah, I think we have a
Picking off easy things for Picking off easy things for. Okay, I, I have one comment about that, which is that, you know, I, I dove into that a little bit with trying to figure out our process for nominating somebody, sending a name up to the mayor, and I was surprised by the clause that said we were gonna send all of the applicants' names as well, and when I looked at it, I couldn't find anywhere in code where it said that that was required, but I don't find code necessarily. Maybe if you're really used to, to working with it, but I think average citizen, I'm gonna say no. Because I had to work on this one, it took a stupid amount of time, I thought, and so I would like to see us have it written out. Like, rather than say, go to muni code, at least I like the idea of saying, muni code is the basis, and here's our rough synopsis of it, I don't really want to just, but it sounded like that's maybe where the body was.
Yeah, I think that's the right thing, I mean, you have to, we have to say that if there's a conflict, muni to code, you know, is determined. But I agree with you, because it's really hard, so I mean, I spent years looking through it, and it still confuses me every time.
And, and I would add that since it's so routine and this, our seats are, are moving, that a new person finding the code reference and then a brief summary right there, that's very clear, that we can, someone else can reference, and we can reference, that's how vacancy is built, or the board chooses and then submits to the mayor, that should be clear too. In terms that are understood. Since we had that recently, it's good, fresh item.
And I think there was a question earlier about which parts of code, it's parts of, it's Title twenty-seven which defines service areas and what service area board is. And authority and procedures are, so service areas themselves defined in Title twenty-seven. But then there's also stuff under Title twenty-four for boards and commissions, which is more general, which also applies to us. Because we're both kind of a, we're a general board, except we're more, except when we're a specific board. So things around vacancy procedures and a few other things, actually not vacancies, there's, there's a couple of things in there that sort of basically are the, are the general policy in that chapter, Title twenty-seven specifics for service area boards.
Yeah, that's where I ended up, if you, I just now experimented with it again and just typed in committee membership, like in case, like, so in other words, like, you have to know you what you're looking for, when you type in committee membership, you get something completely different, so that's why I think that, anyway. I don't need to, to beat that if we have agreement, but I don't have anything else to say.
And what about the, the very first section, so one suggestion I was thinking of doing is split. A version, another way of organizing documents. So we have kind of, we currently have a part one, which is kind of establishing general powers. What I was thinking is actually having like a, having at the very beginning executive summary. So kind of the, the general principles that sit behind everything, that we try to follow. And then, two would be establishment, general powers, and that would have one section about what we're doing as a board of supervisors. And one section about the function as a community council, have those as two clearly conceived sections.
At the very beginning.
Yeah, so there'd be a, basically, section one would be executive summary principles. Section two would be what we currently call section one, establishment, general powers, the good of board supervisors, but then have that as two parts. One part would be good of any service area, board of supervisors, and then the other one would be the function as community council. And that's where we go into a little bit more detail about what land use is for and why that's special, et cetera.
I'm sorry, are we still working, are, are we starting at the beginning and working through, or are we still like going for the easy?
I've gone through, I've already gone through the easy legal stuff.
That was it?
All of the legal stuff, that was it, there aren't that many.
So, sorry, so we agreed on membership that we were gonna work with rewriting the, or, sorry, summarizing, not rewriting, summarizing, muni code. Does that mean we can cross off section two point one on your chart?
The first part, yeah, so the, so we've just been talking about the legal requirements, that's the first column.
Code and statutes.
Code and statutes.
Mike went through that whole column first, not the next one of what we do now.
Okay, I feel like, I feel like we have a few different systems going here.
Okay, well, I, I can follow any system, well, not any, I don't mind what system, I just work from this, because this is the one I've looked at most years. So, we can go through section by section, or we can find easy things, we can find easy things to do. Which I think in this case probably is membership. Or we can go through kind of theme wise. What I started doing was, because I thought this is what the question was, the suggestion was, was going through on the theme of where are we? Where do we have to make changes because we don't match code, or open meetings act, or ethics code, et cetera. So that's what we just went through, and really, it's, we can tidy up the first part of the document to say what we're, what GBOS is for. The community council role, we have to update membership, we have to at least reference the ethics code. Yeah, I think that's.
And then voting?
Voting, yeah, voting is really about the ethics code and disclosures primarily. There's some other stuff as well, but that's not on the legal code and statute side. Public hearings, I think, is the bigger question. Budget, we just have a little bit to clear up in terms of the capital projects. And that's pretty much it, except for conditional use process that we just need to verify does line up with the, with code Title twenty-one. But I don't think it quite matches, and it's mostly just some terms different, but there may be some other things that are different as well. So that's a relatively short list of things that we have to do, to make us comply with code statutes.
Somebody, I asked either one of the co-chairs, is there any of that that you feel like we need to discuss right now?
I think, I think it is worth just going through to make sure we all have the same understanding of what LUC and GBOS do. How they're different, how they're similar, and how they relate, because every time I think through it, I come up to slightly different conclusions. So it might be a useful thing to do, make sure we're all on the same page, or if we're not, where there's disagreement, I think that would be helpful.
I just worry that that is a more esoteric argument and not strictly speaking code, I'm trying, really trying to knock off something off the list there to do this.
Yeah, so in that case, so if we, so if we kind of put a little parentheses around section one A then. And then the rest of it, I think is straightforward.
Okay, thank you.
On the first column.
So, sorry, in other words, some of this is gonna be work in progress. For example, clarifying the membership thing, but that we're all in agreement that things that need to be code are code, and we don't have to discuss anything.
No, thank you, I, I like the sound of that, if everyone followed that first column and nothing has stuck out for the last several months either about something that's not, we're bound to. So then we could go to the does it match what we do now, and how, if we want to change it? That could get.
I would say I think there's something else that we might be able to knock off easily, but. So there's two sections which I don't think are worth keeping, and I'd be interested in everyone's opinions on that. So one, section two ten, so that's policy process for vacating rights of way easements. There is a, again, I think there's a code process for doing this. Do we need our own rule? It's not something we've done, I would think, in the last decade. It may have been my fault comment, two or three decades ago before Title twenty-one. It's section, Article ten, section two. Article ten, Article two, that's, sorry.
Not in one, so it's. Trying to think of what was going on.
Oh yes, sorry, eleven, my apologies, Article eleven.
What did you say, Brian?
I'm trying to think, what was going on in ninety-eight? That caused our, that caused the.
So it's ten on your copy, maybe?
Yeah, so, and, you know, and, so something was happening, I'm trying to just jog my memory of what was happening and something started happening probably in ninety-seven. In ninety-eight, I'm trying to think if this was tied to something with the resort or with AWU or with, you know, what was the, what was the event that, that that precipitated this Article ten in our rules and procedures?
I think what was going on then?
You know, I mean, because.
Olympics, and there was golf course, and none of that.
And then, that was all previous, though, that was like ninety-four, ninety-five.
Okay, it was still rumbling in ninety-eight.
Yeah, it was still grumbling a little bit, but was this, did this have anything to do with, with like the water treatment plant? Or a, you know, the Earlberg, Earlberg had already been extended, you know. To the, the hotel was up and running. And what was, you know, there was nothing rumbling about up valley, you know. Another ski area going in, so what? And the floods were in, what, ninety-four, ninety-three? Ninety-five, so. Yeah, I'm just, you know, and trying to think of what was going on. And then, you know, was this, was this the Crow Creek neighborhood going in, went that, that very first round? But I thought that was like two thousand four, two thousand six, when there was that full.
Yeah, the, the plan.
Going on, so I'm trying to think of who was trying to do what?
I would be tempted to look at it the other way of, the history is useful to know why it was there, but I think we still have the question, does it serve any value today?
True.
And there's already, there's plenty of code and process that we have to follow for vacation rights of way. We could do something additional and say we want to follow this process on top, probably can't enforce it. You know, because this, this related to landed title, and land use would follow Title twenty-one. To me, this seems not redundant, but just simply wrong, I mean, this isn't, this, this references code, which I don't think exists. So, I, to me, this seems like a, it would be good to know why it was there. Make us more comfortable about taking out, but, you know, we're not doing any action tonight, today. But I think it probably makes sense to remove this. But again, I can be persuaded, there's a good argument against that, but I guess we're vacating the section of code.
Well, as you say, this has to go through a process, right, so if, if we propose it, hopefully we flesh out why it exists in the first place.
Yeah.
Certainly, I mean. I would hope that this gets discussed on several meetings at least, land use as well, and I'm like, right in the middle of texting Larry. All right, Larry, if anybody knows this, it might be you, but, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
This may relate to the fact that we have a bunch of undeveloped right of ways within the service area. And this discussion came up a point in time with the connection that goes from the end of Egloff here, that would cut through the marshes up by Glacier Creek Drive. You know, and so there are right of ways like that that have been discussed over the years about vacating, because one, they're highly undevelopable. And then two, there's been interest by property owners to purchase that right of way. Because they don't see the development of it. So it could have been at that point in time that these were put in here to make sure there was a process that the GBOS reviewed all vacations. And were aware of them so that they weren't surprised that it happened at the muni level. Because probably that, probably something like that happened led to this being written. And that, that's just what I'm, I'm getting to.
Would, would this, the policy process for vacating rights of way, does that appear in other community council rules and procedures throughout the municipality? Like, let's think about, you know, like the, the Ternigan Community Council. Were they dealing with that when they were talking about the trail going through Fish Creek along the railroad right of way?
I think, you know, a lot of times, policies and procedures are really driven by the people who sit behind the desk. So that's how they, they own, a lot of the details in here I've seen developed over the years, my time being here, by people most of the time reactory to something that's happened that we need to be more clear on, so. So the muni doesn't direct, you know, the muni doesn't have any direct relation with community councils to help them write their policies and procedures, it really happens at that time, they do suggest a review. But for the most part, it's, happens at the local level. There is, there is kind of a, an ideal set of bylaws, and community councils are meant to adopt those and then adjust them as.
And C, C three and C four mention area plans and trail plans and then emergency responders. In that they should be consulted before petitions for vacant.
Was, was nine, was ninety-eight, were we talking about the rail spur into Girdwood in ninety-eight?
Yeah, it's within that period.
This could be, this could be, this could be from the rail spur.
So if we take this out, does that mean the rail spur comes back?
You know, so this could be, this could be something where somebody might have been looking at a previous right of way that that basically ran where the Beaver Pond Trail is, it connected to Crow Creek Road, an old mining or logging or right of way, that the railroad was looking to acquire. Or looking to see someone vacate so that then they could put their rail spur easement. That's.
That kind of seems like what makes sense.
That's, I think that's the timeline we're looking at right there. And, and no, you're right, Mike, it, it is, it doesn't matter what the event was that triggered it, and, and is this relevant in our in our bylaws right now, and if it was, if it has historical relevance. Then I think our review and summary of it is, is very valuable.
I think it'd be helpful to understand where it came from, and that should inform our decision, like, my, I don't see a reason to keep it now. But I think we have to probably go a little bit further than not a reason to keep it. So I think again there, if we want to, if we want to keep reference to this, we'll need to just make sure we understand what the process would be. What this sort of mandatory process would be to do, to make easements anyway. Because again, some of the references in here, I don't think are relevant to any log.
Yeah, somebody really stirred up the hornets nest in ninety-seven, early ninety-eight.
If we take, for example, Title twenty-one fifteen, one thirty does not exist.
It's what?
The title that's referencing, the code that's referencing in A and B. Twenty-one fifteen, one thirty doesn't exist.
Doesn't exist anymore.
It seems to exist in twenty fourteen, or twenty sixteen, whenever it was. So that's referring to the old Title twenty-one code, so we can't use it as it is. I guess the question is, do we, do we just get rid of it, or do we replace it with a reference to something else, or is it just part of our general processes? Municipal, the other, the other section, I think, we can talk about, if it not be necessary, yes, sorry.
Sorry, sorry, can we, can we just close it, I just feel much better to close it. So I, I, I wanted to say one thing about that, it might be possible to really cut this back, like, I think, A, we might be able to just rewrite A. And some of the rest of this could be superfluous if you're then following muni code for the rest of it. Just asserting our right to be notified, the GBOS right to be notified of and then I also do like D about not considering previously vacated rights ways justification for something. But anyway, we could take a look at, at seriously editing.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, how does that relate to the processes that have to be followed now anyway? Yeah, so I guess the question is, how does that relate to the processes that have to be followed now anyway?
Yeah.
Right, right.
What's our role in that process and do we want to add some additional notes and procedures around that?
Okay.
That makes sense.
So now we can close it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the other thing that I think would be worth questioning is there's a section, I think it's article twelve, section two, emergency permitting process.
On yours, it might be twelve.
Twelve, yeah.
Online it's thirteen, but I have the paper version.
So again, I think this is, the minimum's out date, but I think this is now, this is another thing that's probably moved to now we have staff. Yeah.
I just wanted to ask staff, do you see anything, do you see anything that jumps out at you about that?
Uh, no, I mean, from our, my perspective, we just did this with the, the Halloween storm a few years back. We had to do emergency permitting on the Ruine and we just handled that internally with the project management office. You know, I don't think if you didn't have staff here to give guidance to that supervisor as to what to do.
So that, that's one of the themes through this, and it doesn't so much affect us on the code side, it's more, you know, what we do and what we want to do. There's lots of references, there's lots of description in there about what you have to do because there's only a board of volunteers with those staff.
This is probably a direct relation to um, the ninety six, ninety seven floods, um, and when they got fined for putting in material well after the flood.
Yeah.
Um, down on the levy.
Right. Would staff find this any reference to an emergency permit uh, appropriate in our rules and procedures?
I am already following procedures within the municipality for this, so I wouldn't be going to the GBOs operating procedures to do it. Um, but you know, this really works as a reference for um, supervisors um, to understand. This could be just modified, uh, but it's a good thing for them to understand that we just can't go and run and do something. Uh, just because we feel like it and uh, we need to go through some sort of procedures to make sure we have approvals.
Thank you, uh, that would be helpful.
Somebody asked, so we essentially have um, consolidate and update on this, is that correct?
My, my opinion still is just remove it. I don't think this is any different from other things that, that staff manage as part of the day to day job, as part of the service manager. There is a, what I'm going to suggest is a slight change in structure and that would include um, a description of staff and then roles. Um, so that, this is the kind of thing that just sit in there, that service area manager has this set and we're going to base it on job description and.
So it would say they have the responsibility, the power to do.
Which include managing this process.
Emergency permitting.
Yeah, and we don't have to detail that because you already have the process.
Yeah, and each, each event is different from.
Yeah, exactly.
Cause like this one, it calls out fishing game, but at the same time, we probably had to get the core involved and probably had to get D N R involved. So there's, there's a lot more just besides that, that agency.
So I think, so my sense is, let's just remove.
Okay.
Um, yeah, and I think the other one, we should definitely do some more research to find out what, what precipitated that rules and procedures and just uh.
Section ten?
Uh, yeah, section ten.
Okay.
But mostly remove, I think, okay. So now we get into more interesting stuff, which is the other two columns. And potentially another, I'm just going to go through, so the other thing I do not have this document on the screen, sorry, I will make sure I share. So I just want to say about another, uh, I put together a maybe another structure of the document, it is much different, it's very similar. Um, it said, start with kind of a preamble, an executive summary. Um, what we're here for, what principles we follow, and then um, in the establishment and general power, which is currently section one A. It would explicitly have a section about the valley service area and a section about functioning as a community council. And there would be a clear description in there of what M C done for, it's not smudge what it does, but what and the relationship to the G B O S, that's where that would be described. Then we go into the rules to procedures. Um, and it would be members, officers, staff. Um, areas of responsibility. Uh, meetings, then probably a section on the agenda structure for meetings. I think that might be what's pulling out, um, because our regular meeting, we have a template we follow, but it's not described in there anyway. So maybe if we actually have a, we could actually have a section that just says, you know, this is the template we follow. So we have, you know, presentations, consent items, walk and go and we can set what can. Um, that may also be if we pull something back closer to um, public hearings, and that's a place where we can go into that. Uh, then voting would be pretty much the same with the updates. We had a section correspondence from GBOs and I think that's a bit, what is that now? It's probably, should say a little bit about what resolutions. Begin letters and also, you know, just ask the supervisors. Um, you know, clarify what we, when we're talking as supervisors, when we, when we talk to supervisors, when we're talking on behalf of GBOs and when we're talking as individuals. And I think that is helpful.
Mike, just to chime in, the correspondence from GBOs is way toward the end where we just were.
Yeah.
But then I think Mike is suggesting we put that up into, oh no, well.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's sort of after the meeting, so.
After meetings.
It would make it a bit broader and just describe what res, resolutions and letters and other kind of presentations are. Cause I think that's, that's definitely causing confusion of us.
I, I really appreciate the um, the um, kind of calling out communication, especially our communication between committees and our communication as speaking for GBOs and speaking as a resident of Girdwood.
Yeah, because we can, I mean, you know, we can speak as just individuals as Mike. We can speak as supervisors because we have a role as elected officials. And then, you know, in certain circumstances, we can speak on behalf of um, GBOs. When GBOs has made a decision or when we're signing letters in one of our areas of responsibility, we're basically signing on behalf of GBOs. And that's a slightly different role, different responsibility.
Exactly, I mean, so more specifically, not to get off into the weeds, but more specifically. For instance, when I step up to speak um, in support of the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan. I list myself as a resident of Girdwood, a member of GBOs, but speaking as Brian Burnett. And these are, I think, and, and a lot of times I think people don't hear that.
Yeah.
And um, so that we, you know, and somebody else would be getting up, speaking at that same meeting again as a GBOs member and perhaps the person that is speaking about the resolution that we have in front of the assembly. So these are, these are things that I, I feel I'd like to have clarified.
Yes, and that's keeping in compliance with the assemblies rules. You said you're only allowed one person from an elected body and that's why in our meetings we designate. Oh yeah, getting better at designating that one person and then anyone else can speak on the way you just specified.
Again, we have, there are two roles, we, we are elected as representatives of the community at some level. Um, and then you can also speak as an individual and they, they're slightly different selves. So I mean, one thing I always find funny, but odd is, you know, when you sign letters in, in your role, it doesn't mean you prove it or voted for it. You know, there's definitely, I've signed letters that I'm against it, but that was the decision of the body, so I'm signing. You know, my name is at the bottom because I'm in the role of co-chair or supervisor, whatever it is with that area of responsibility. And that's what the body says, even though I may personally disagree with it.
Right.
And that's, that's fine, it's weird, but it's fine.
Exactly, or it would be like um, as if I was at a land use committee meeting, voting one way as Brian Burnett and then voting as the GBOs uh, supervisor at the GBOs meeting. And the votes would not, might, do not necessarily have to agree.
Yeah, that's another area where we could perhaps clarify things, that does get confusing as well. Um, you know, within our, within our bodies.
Can I circle back around a little thing?
Yeah.
Can we start real quickly about the reorganization? The only part of that that makes me nervous, I mean, I can certainly see the advantage to it, but when we've changed the rules and procedures in the past, we've done it with a very clear this, what, this is what's changing, and so if we do massive changes and reorganize at the same.
Obviously, it's uh, taking one section and either removing it or replacing it. So one, you know, we may have section, it was section seven, we've moved it in front of something to section five, but it's still that section. So we can, we can almost do it by just keeping it in the same place and changing the number. Okay, and at the end, there'd be a reordering.
But it'd be very much a reorganization, so we wanted to clarify that with the board as if you're okay. We think some of these things belong under meetings and agendas and this, and then it's, nothing skipped, but it is a reorganization. It's not, it come out same.
I almost wonder if it's worth doing in two steps, so kind of an explanation of here's the changes and then here's the.
Exactly, but we would be talking about adding some things. So for example, I think we need to, we need to have a section that talks about, um, so really there's officers, areas of responsibility and staff. Somehow that's between one and three sections. Um, so it's sort of internal structure um, within, and I think, eh, you can say areas of responsibility are distinct from offices and staff roles, so maybe what we have is one, where we currently have section four, I think it is. Oh, sorry, article four officers, maybe we just expand that into officers and staff, or maybe we have one for officers and one for staff, I don't care. I mean, that's effectively, you know, we just add some of it inside.
Uh, thank you, Jennifer, for so just.
I don't, I don't think I have any argument with the idea of reorganizing, I just want to make sure that public can be as.
Yes, that makes sense.
Yeah, okay, okay, sorry, sorry.
And really, that's, that's it, so I think the um, when, sorry, that's one other thing. Um, we have a section on committees, uh, I think, I think a better way of doing that is to have a section that talks about land use committees. We've mentioned it at the very beginning of the document saying, land use committee is kind of our community council, performs that function of community council. And then when we get into detail about procedures, instead of just having one section of the committee, we'd have one section for a new seek, it's got its own special stuff. And then another section for all the other committees we have, and that's where we have to update it, list the committees we actually have. Um, I think that was it.
That would be more fitting for what we're, what we're currently doing and what we would like to do, I think, in the future.
Yeah.
Land use is a special committee and then all the subcommittees are unique after land use.
So I will share, again, this is just a, this is just a framework and idea, it can be tweaked, but um, I will share this sort of table of contents, pretty similar. Just a couple of, a couple of shit. Add staff, almost up into office this, add a section for meeting agenda, take away one of those sections discussed earlier. And then split um, committees into one section on that you see and one section on the, on all the other committees.
Right.
I guess broad correspondence from the GBOs would be a bit broad, just letters.
Yes, it's, it's in here, you just update it with Margaret's approval. The correspondence part.
Want to, can I introduce the topic, well, not introduce, but just move to a slightly different topic?
I think so, if everybody's good with where we are. Don't hear anything, so introduce to your next topic.
So um, in the next two columns, so what we do now, what we want to do. There's this question here about, is the purpose of this revision to update it to today? Or is the purpose of this revision to discuss changes we want to make to the way we do things now and incorporate that into this? Now, I think we could do it two steps, we could just try and first of all, bring it up to date and then go through, but with an eye to the things we might want to change. And then go through like a second round of making changes to what we want to do in the future. Um, that's one way of doing it, or we can try and buy. By cherry, I don't know, eat the whole cake, I don't know. But uh, we can try and do both in one go. Um, I just want to get a sense of what, I, I don't think we've completely decided what we want to do, I think there's a we've definitely had discussions about what hasn't been working very well. Um, and I think there are ideas about how we can do things better, but I don't think we have a final decision like that is. Um, so we could talk about those a little bit now or just agree that, you know, in principle, what we're going to do first is just bring it up to date to now and then a second round to make changes.
I was just, uh, just updating to now, just, just looking at the time, like we don't know, fifty minutes left, so I don't know if we have time for the whole.
I agree.
If, if you're okay with that, I mean, I know you guys have looked into this a lot.
That's why I did it, it's two columns.
I, I, I agree, I agree with Jennifer and I think that'll be great because we can basically what we bring up to date now, we can put out on the agenda as new business in front of everybody on Monday. And then that conserves our notice that we are going to revamp the rules and procedures at the January meeting. Right?
That's optimistic timing, but.
Yeah, didn't say which year.
Right, maybe that's. Revision before, so um, I think that you guys are definitely on the right track as far as figuring out how to approach it and all the rest of that. I think one of the things that really gunk's up the machinery is that people who are coming to land use or any of the other committees don't really know what they want and they don't really know how to express it and they don't really know who actually does the what. And you know, I think there's this feeling like if you're upset about something here locally, whatever it might be, that you can take it to the, you know, these different committees and they're going to say, yes, by golly, we should do something about that and we come out with a letter and that's, that's kind of it, right? But it doesn't take the responsibility away from the individual to continue championing their cause and it also doesn't put you in their place to champion their cause, like, so I think it would be, and I don't know where this fits and I'm, realize that's not very helpful, but that's where, that's where it is, you know, people contact me. A really good example would have been the uh, power lines over at Town Square. You know, Ellen just wanted to come in and talk about it, so it was just a public comment, but a lot of times things that are public comment turn out to be action items. And you know, if you want to be a stickler about it and make them come back for new business, old business, then that's you know, not necessarily in anybody's best interest, but it's true that it hasn't been noticed that it was going to be a topic under discussion. And anyway, I would just say, there has to be a way to allow for the public who are not going to be educated to communicate effectively and if it comes down to a conversation about what the rules are, then you know what the other committees operating rules are or whatever, that's not going to be a very successful conversation. So I just want to throw that out there, like a lot of the things that have jumped in in front of other things or somehow gone through the wrong way or whatever. Like they were, it was timing of the, the year, maybe some shifting of some meetings, lots of different reasons, but I think there has to be a way to accommodate that things don't always go the way that you expect that they should.
I think one thing, one thing you bring up, I think is really good is the, what the audience for this, mostly us and other people were very heavily engaged. I don't think this is, although it'd be nice if we had an executive summary which was very accessible, that's not really the primary purpose of this document. We probably should have some other, it generates something else of a user's guide of how to, you know, have people who are, who have real lives and more interesting hobbies.
I haven't found anybody other than the people in this room to be readers.
So maybe it's a bit, maybe it's YouTube video that.
Maybe, yeah.
So, you know, maybe it's a, a good.
I don't know.
Good public, you know, good local government.
I don't know what you would name it to get their attention, but yes.
Well, how about we work on this before we work on our social media campaign?
Yeah. What I, what I wanted to break out is this is really meant to be a simplification and a cleanup and an explanation of what we do for us. But if we can make it more accessible, that's good, but it's never going to, it's not going to be a casual read. Um, but you know, maybe there should be a parallel, it says, you know, if you want this, do this, or that, do that.
Well, and that's, that's kind of what was intended with the supplemental document that I think is your appendix. But, but, and I mean, that was pretty much written by, yeah, the conditional use process, that was written by Marco Zaccaro because he saw the need. Um, so, and he was deeply invested in the process at the time, so he was probably the best person to actually write it.
Thank you, Margaret, for explaining this and sharing your thoughts too. And on the last comments that some of you said, one thing we have done already that I think we want to do is to have a consent agenda, which we just started sort of recently. which we just started sort of recently, and that would be something that hits these next two columns. And then one of the goals I think is pretty healthy would be to encourage participation in our meetings by having them be effective, timely. And anyone that does go to as many as we might for land use, they hear it four times because we don't have a, a public hearing process that will actually do. It's in our rules and procedures, but we don't follow it. So that would be our next thing in those two columns to, um, work on. But I know you, we already said, body said today, we're good for now to make changes for where we are.
We can talk about it a little bit, but what we probably want to do is if we've made the decision, let's try and clean them up so they represent what we do now. Then we start there, then we, yeah, but we can have that parallel, we can have a parallel discussion. So I guess that, you know, there is this question. The, the argument for having old business, new business or everything is it gives plenty of opportunities for people to talk, learn about, discuss. The problem is that it also gives too many opportunities, not because, I mean, to slow things down, sometimes that's fine. A lot of the time that's fine and it gives the opportunity to learn more. But it also means that, um, if you go to one meeting, you're going to miss three of them. You know, if anything, it goes through land use and GBOS, you've really got to go to all four and that may be the petitioner has to go for. You know, the residents, neighbors who are upset about something may need to go to all four. It doesn't necessarily increase participation. I mean, it does in terms of the number of meetings, but it doesn't necessarily increase the amount of useful participation people have. It's a disincentive in many ways to get involved in this thing because there's so many meetings. And that's, and typically, these Robert's rules typically, things don't work that way. You would have a, you would have an introduction which may just briefly describe what it is. Going into a lot of detail, definitely wouldn't go into debate and discussion. It might pose some questions, um, and then you would have a, you know, an item where you're actually discussing it. You're hearing from everybody involved. You're giving a proper hearing. You're deliberating and you may or may not vote. You can, you know, we can always decide to have a discussion and then push the vote off to a later date. There's more stuff you want to understand and get. But this, you know, going through the, having this strict, everything has to go through each committee twice. Is not necessarily that useful as long as we have proper notice procedures. So anything significant. And I don't quite know how to define significant, but anything significant would have to be noticed well before. Not on meeting, you're discussing it, it would have given, you know, notice beforehand. So that's a big change to how we've been doing things in the past. And that's one of the ideas that I know we've been bouncing around. So that's kind of a big one. And I think it's good that we just have, we can maybe talk about it briefly now and then push it off to one side and not have that as the focus of this discussion. I think it's just something we can, we can think about and as we revise this, um, if we have that in mind, that's potentially the next revision. Then we won't go down a path that, uh, but we don't go, go down a path that closes off the options. Something else, something related to that. Yeah. So one of the issues there is so kind of small automatic things. You wouldn't necessarily need to go through a, you know, pre-notice. You could do, you'd have in the meeting, on the agenda of a meeting and do on a meeting. Uh, but anything big, definitely you don't want to have. Anything big or requires significant extent of expenditure or some big policy decision or something like that, that absolutely would have to be. Notice at a meeting before the, the meeting we actually discuss. So it'd follow a similar process. We just wouldn't necessarily have a full discussion about it when it's being introduced. So that way the agenda would move from old business, new business to unfinished business, new business. So there are things we haven't fully dealt with in the past, which we can continue to deal with. And there are things which we're bringing in for the first time now. So that would be a kind of change in our agenda, but that's it. Again, further down the road.
Sure.
Just think it's worth bringing up.
And then pending and things like that. But I often think of when Kyle or Margaret bring an item, it is simply a presentation. And they say, you'll hear it next month. And then we have much more robust discussion the next month. And usually it's something we really need. And it's not super time sensitive, but we follow it more closely on that one.
I'd say, you know, Mike, you, you really hit on one, um, one point. And that is, uh, getting participation. And as, as someone who goes to a lot of meetings, um, I don't see many, I don't see what we do. I see what we do as being a bit of a disincentive is like you say, this is that, um, there are, there are items that interest me as, as a member of Girdwood. And, um, and I feel that if I miss a land use meeting or trails meeting on the way to this item moving forward, that you don't tell them what's going to happen. Be it like as a petitioner, you, you have to be at all of the meetings as things move through. And, and it's, it's a big challenge. And, and as far as I can tell, there's about a dozen people in Girdwood that are ready to do that. And they all sit on either the Board of Supervisors for Land Use or Trails Committee. And then, then there's other, you know, and I, I don't have a, I don't have a, an answer to it. But I think that we can work towards that as being one thing. One of Rihanna's more points is making our meetings more effective so that our participation has more significance.
And, you know, we do things that help, like, you know, all of our meetings are hybrid, which I think is great. That's been a huge step forward.
Yeah.
Uh, so we definitely do things that help participation. And I think if we had a, if we had slight better organization of meetings, so you could be saying, you know, this item is likely be at this time, um, then that would help. So, you know, we, we have, you know that you can turn up at eight o'clock and it'll be the third item, roughly the third item on here. So we do things to help in that way and try and reduce the amount of time people have to devote.
Yeah.
So because, you know, as, as you know, Jen, it's probably even worse when you're kids younger, it wouldn't really have been feasible to, to come to all these meetings. Now, there are a lot of people, a lot of people are excluded just because of the time commitment.
Yeah.
The commitment to going to so many meetings. And you say the meeting form a problem.
Margaret, I think something else to be discussed, and perhaps I have missed this, but I have seen people who are looking for conditional use or whatever, using the GBOS meeting as their public meeting, which is required by code. And I feel like that is, you know, it's appropriate-ish, but it, it makes more sense if this was a meeting of a community council that doesn't have all of the other areas of responsibility that you guys have. And so when they come in, you know, in order to give an adequate presentation, that could easily derail your meeting for at least half an hour. And, you know, we tried to deter that with, you know, okay, this is a presentation, not more than ten minutes, but then there's question and answer. So I think that figuring out how to, to find a space for those meetings, um, somehow. And maybe that same space is also afforded to, um, and I don't want to create more meetings, but, um, like, I think that the joint meetings with the Fire Department Board and GBOS, those fill a specific need that isn't really all that easily met anyplace else. Sometimes the land use and GBOS meetings together really fit, uh, need. So anyway, perhaps there's a way to support holding those meetings when they come up in some separate forum that is also accepted as like, this is what we're going to do tonight. And it's really, you know, we're not going to get a lot else done, but it will afford the right opportunity to have these conversations, especially if we start having more conversation about things up there.
Yeah. The, the other idea that, um, some communities use that they have, they make more useful work sessions. But what, what typically happens is, um, you have a meeting immediately preceding the GBOS meeting. So we have our standard third Monday GBOS meeting, but we'd arrive an hour earlier. And we'd have a work session which basically covers the complex issues first. So we can kind of get main questions out of the way. We understand what it is. And then the discussion in the primary meeting is, uh, is more efficient. Uh, that's one way we can do it. So we add, effectively we add an hour to the meeting, but we take an hour, we take an hour off the end and add it to the beginning. Hopefully we take two hours off the end.
I can sit for five hours.
Yeah. So, so the idea is basically we pre, we pre-game certain things that are complex enough that we know there's going to be a more detailed discussion. Community should still have, can still be part of that discussion. But that's the other thing. We have to be a little bit better at managing, uh, managing those discussions. Cause we, we often end up in a situation where there's one or two people who may be, you know, be involved in six or seven or eight rounds of discussion. Uh, when we're at the deliberation phase of trying to make a decision.
Yeah.
We can move things around a bit.
Well, and also maybe a bit more pre-gaming with the, you know, whatever supervisor, whoever the supervisor is is overseeing whatever committee it happens to be with the chair of that committee and the petitioner. Like, that kind of stuff doesn't all have to happen in front of everybody at a meeting. And I think, you know, I, I know that you all have already had lots of your free time taken up by your volunteer effort. So I'm like, I'm not, I'm not lobbing any criticism there at all. But I think there is room to, you know, like, let's figure out what it is they could really want to ask for before we take it to GBOS. Cause it's just frustrating for everyone.
Yes. There's, um, there's, I think the other thing is we probably need to be a bit more nuanced in the way we deal with the Open Meetings Act as well. Cause there's a lot of things, you know, the Open Meetings Act, for example, says that, you know, administrative, administrative management tasks for advisory boards are covered by open meeting, are subject to open meetings at all. So, you know, when we're organizing ourselves, that doesn't need to be an open meeting. When we're organizing agendas, it doesn't need to be an open meeting. I mean, we can get lawyers to confirm that, but that's, that would be what it says. So there's a lot of stuff we end up doing in meetings that we don't need to. That's just our own organization. We're not big policy changes. It's just, you know, the day-to-day minutia of, you know, are we going to discuss this here then? How are we going to schedule meetings, stuff like that? There's a few other things we can just make.
Yeah, I think we've fallen into meetings for some things because it is easier to get everybody's opinions. Because ultimately everybody has one. And if they're not included in it, in the get-go, then it, it can just feel like something's been left out. So.
And as a community, you know, we have a reputation for discussing things a lot and we shouldn't stop that necessarily.
Not true. That's more effectively.
Yeah, more effective.
Less is more.
Yeah. And, you know, you never know, at some point in the future, we may, may even have more responsibilities and more power.
Mike, we should, I know we didn't follow the agenda today, which is, is because we didn't have the changes proposed.
So I think focusing on column two or column three, um, it's. Yeah, committee stuff was, is really split into two. We have LUC and the other committees, different. Yeah, change the agenda, having a separate section on the agenda for our regular meetings. Yeah, and then public hearing going forward discussed. So public hearings, we would, um, we have public hearings in there now. If we, we clean that up to represent what we actually do now, that we won't, we wouldn't have public hearings as a section. So with this, I'm not sure exactly how we're going to deal with that. We'd move, I think if we move to a, um, if we move to a, an introduction and then discussion, it's closer to like a public hearing structure or it wouldn't be that, it would have to be that formal.
That one could be floating, like what, here's what it's, we're doing now. Or just here's what the rules and procedures say and highlight what we aren't doing, just highlighted.
Well, is, is it possible to use some of our committees as that, as the opening salvo, if you will? I mean, I, if I'm not mistaken, some of the original, um, intentions of the land use committee were to make the GBOS meetings more productive. And, and, uh, because what has the hotel and golf course were being discussed. Significant and, and lengthy conversations in GBOS, four and five hour meetings. That, that the thought was is that presenting, um, them in land use committee is more of an open discussion forum. Served as a way to, to create more effective meetings with GBOS. So can we see if there is a way to, um, uh, get a lot of this to start out at a, at a land use committee meeting, at a, at a trails committee meeting. And, and then move into consideration and action at, at GBOS.
Do you mean it goes through LUC first and then it goes to GBOS? Cause at the moment we do both in parallel, don't we?
We do them both in parallel and, um, and I don't know, maybe, maybe the, the committees become a, um, become that opening meeting and, and if something has been discussed in committee, it's, it's old business that are actionable at GBOS. Just throwing something like that up.
An idea.
One thought about that is that, that might be nice for something like, you know, the weed discussion and the, um, the spray, the pesticide discussion that happens every year, like everybody on GBOS hears that over and over and over again, right?
Yeah.
But if you could have the whole discussion happen at land use as much as possible. And then whatever land use decides, bring it forward to GBOS. A, a much shortened presentation, but that the public, I mean, is that what you're talking about? But basically we've had the public discussion about invasions and whether or not to spray at LUC. And that they've worn their thing and we said, okay, yeah.
It's almost like a consent, but it's not because.
Right.
That's a different spot on the agenda, but it's heard and discussed in an open meeting like you, I'm just repeating what you. But, um, and that is definitely a repeating topic.
Yeah.
Margaret.
It's a repeating topic, but it's one that's come to very different conclusions over the years.
Yeah.
Right. Based on who's participating.
This, well. And so it would take some work to, I mean, this is why I think we should do this in stages. Cause we need to make sure that the, you know, I'd like to hear the community's thought on this. But it can be, it can be frustrating if you have completely different people show up at the GBOS discussion that showed up, the LUC discussion, which has.
Because ultimately the GBOS are the authoritative body that speaks to the.
Right.
Assembly. Um, and that's, that's kind of the crux of the issue to a number of things. And I don't necessarily want to dive into all of that now, but, you know, like this is why the original community council was dissolved. And, you know, if you send two opinions up to the assembly, you are not going to make progress in either direction.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we've just never seen anybody know what to do with that. So, and fundamentally it is impossible to consider that all of Girdwood is really going to agree on really anything. So. Somebody has to be the one.
And swoops.
I agree.
Yeah, I think swoops.
Well, there you go. I think we could all agree on the speed limit too, you know, or come to something that everybody could live with, but yeah.
Sorry.
Good point.
Good trying to keep polite.
Yeah. Well, I don't mean to jump in as devil's advocate. I would love to spend less time in meetings as long as it accomplishes the rest of the goals, which are people need to get heard and then action needs to take place. And those two things aren't necessarily all the same.
Well, point taken. I wasn't, I'm not sure what to do with this one either, because there's, there's the obvious, like, we've built up a culture of being heard.
And I think we can be proud of that culture.
Exactly.
You know, we'd be proud of the good things that, that's come out of that.
Yeah.
There are some negatives that come out of that as well. How do we keep the positives and?
Yeah.
Get rid of the negatives. That's the tricky part.
Tasers. Helping with the lightness.
I think everyone can agree on that.
Three minutes. Well, if, if the next item on the agenda was about timeline, I, I'm certainly thinking you're all not going to be surprised that this will not be done before Monday or having anything out by Friday at a reasonable time for anyone to look over it on the weekend. So expect a few weeks.
Well, if I may mention on timeline, come back again. I think one of the, the things that can set us up for success as far as. I think one of the, the things that can set us up for success as far as rewriting, rewriting and editing. Our, um, our rules and procedures is that the, is that the community knows that we are rewriting and editing our, our procedures. One of the ways that we can accomplish that is like tonight, we, we can, as a working group, I think we can decide. That the emergency permitting process really can be removed from, we'd like to suggest that it can be removed from our rules and procedures. And if we put that on the agenda for the, this meeting coming up on Monday is new business. And then act on it as old business at the January meeting, this gets people. This allows people that are watching the GBOS say, hey, they're doing some work on rules and procedures. And then as we come out with further edits, people are prepared for it, they're prepared to comment. And then they're not getting hit by a 15 point memo. That they're like, whoa, where did all of this come from all of a sudden? Why do we have to change all of this all at once? Um, I, I know that it, it might not be as effective to hit it, you know. Over a series of couple meetings, but I think that this prepares some people to see some action coming out of this group. And it's not that hard to pick off the easy stuff and then this list becomes just a little shorter.
Thank you, Brian. And there's, I appreciate that idea because there's ways we can say that, even though we can't make emotion. Motions at this work session, but we have ideas and then there's a time span that we're supposed to post the new changes and then change. Edit and amend our rules and procedures and that is a, a finite amount of time that we can't really. Maybe we can change it, but. Don't do 12 times or something. We do it once. And then again. In another. Would you say?
Well, I mean, I look at Article 13 here and I, I see that, you know, maybe amended by a majority. Post amendments communicated to the secretary, posted as outlined and not less than 28 days prior to a regular meeting. So our notice could be as new business and our action could be as old business.
Yeah, it's good to inform people that changes are being made.
Yeah.
Action or.
Are you, are you saying we would basically make, um, make a, make an actual change to the document? By removing a couple of sections as first step and so we'll make, we'll end up having four or five revisions. Of course, the next several months, okay? I can see that.
Instead of all.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, anything else from the board right now? I'm not trying to. Uh, rush, but also wondering what else is productive in the next few minutes before public comment.
Yeah, and, and one thing I'd like to do is can we kind of allocate some responsible adults to some of the stuff we've discussed? So it would be really good if someone has the responsibility for tracking down why to have the. Uh, policy processes from, say, case of that's the way. It'd be good if somebody takes that on.
Would like to do that.
I will do that.
Also.
Okay.
And then, um. I'm gonna have a stab at writing the membership, uh, section and the, the update for the voting section to be comparable with COVID. I will not have them ready for next Monday, but they will be ready, um, before the January meet.
I could do reorganizing and. Other edits I've had, ready, I've been wanting to do for months, but. On it, but didn't always have the time and now I'm not saying I have time, but, uh.
Are we gonna go ahead with the reorganizing? Or did we want?
Well, I, we'll just put it in, I think if we can, just to. If we can put in the minutes to just show how they relate to each other, you know, suggesting new organization.
Okay.
The, the document Mike wants to share, he's referencing.
I'll turn that to a team.
Okay.
My team. And again, we, we're not making decisions on it, it's just a suggestion. Tweaked.
So updating, anything else from anyone? Or we, Margaret?
I want to mention that one of the things that I learned in the Four Acre Group training that we did is that the minutes that I provide are really too much. And they really do just need to be focused on what actions have been taken and the votes that occur. And we really need to start doing that. Um, so as we start thinking about how things go. Um, I want for you to keep that in mind, it, it, they are legible, legal documents that can be discoverable. Um, which isn't necessarily the biggest concern. What I do see is that people are like citing the minutes as though like statements in them are. Are really something other than what they were statements as I heard them. Um, and what matters is the motions, um, and not the conversation. So I'm happy to accept lots of guidance on this, but, um. I'm involved in another group where we are looking at the same thing and. It, it's just a really big cloud of controversy that's not necessary if they're not like that. So that would be.
I, I, I found them very helpful before we had the recordings, before we had YouTube videos.
Right.
When we had YouTube videos, they were a recording of the discussion, the deliberation that led to a decision as well.
Right.
But now.
Does a much better representation, right?
Or an hearing, so that, you know, it's a, now we have the YouTube videos, I completely agree that there really isn't a.
Yeah.
Be better if we just had more, just had a shorter summary.
Yeah, obviously I'll do whatever you want, but the advice that I've gotten and I've kind of started to see the light on that, you know, nine months later, so.
They have come down quite a bit over the years. When we first started here, there are paragraphs, each item and then all their.
I was thinking that it used to include so and so said this and so and so said that, you should include the whole.
Like.
Yeah.
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 Do you like to read the assembly minutes? It's just the action.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and ultimately what was discussed isn't what happened, right? What happened is what was voted.
Well, the body did.
So that would be something to include as we, in our agenda section, would include something on, on minutes, just.
I think that it's actually just the way it's supposed to be. We just have had other habits and, you know, like. Nothing makes me happier than telling everybody what they wanna know, but it's probably too much. And, you know, the same with a meeting like this, you're not making any motions, you're not making any decisions, so. Really shouldn't be anything.
Yep.
Thank you, Margaret. Jennifer.
So are we winding down on the agenda?
I'm, I'm hoping that we are, I'm trying to get there, but.
Oh, well.
It's productive.
Okay.
Yeah, I really appreciate everyone's time.
I had a comment about something that was not necessarily part of the agenda, but is related, so I wanna make sure we're done with the agenda.
I think we are done with the agenda. Margaret's comment was probably the last one, so, yes, go for it.
Okay, um, I wanna mention that I was a little concerned about, uh, a conversation that happened last night at. Land use and, um, I feel that, uh, we've had a couple of conversations about code, oh, conduct. I have not been satisfied by them and I was really concerned about what I heard last night. Um, and shots frankly, and I, I wanna make sure that no matter what is happening, um, even if something like. On the order of Macbeth or Hamlet is happening outside of this room and inside this room as much as possible, then. Us, the representatives of GBOS do not resort to personal attacks or to denigrating somebody's under potential for understanding. Or, and that, that we also just assume that questions are questions, even if they seem argumentative and, and all this. Um, I, I didn't wanna dig real the meeting. And I don't wanna bring this up in a, you know, a, a regular GBOS meeting, but I wanna bring it up now, I think it fits. And, uh, I don't wanna have to bring it up in public. I don't wanna have to address it in the moment, but. Next time I will, because I've asked several times that we not do this and it keeps happening. So again, I don't care what's happening outside, I don't care if it feels, but I don't feel like the. Person who was denigrated in that way responded in kind, even if I understand that, uh. Their mode of questioning is not the most favorable.
Okay. Thanks for bringing it up this time, Jennifer. Sorry. Need anything else from the bodies?
Yeah, I mean, I think I agree with them. There's a, there's a, I, I know exactly what you're talking about. I was participating, I believe, and I agree with you. We should be, we should be held to higher standards than, than other members of the public. Um, we still say that everyone involved in the meeting is meant to follow the code of conduct and obviously a lot of people don't. Um, and I think there is a difference between someone who's there for their first meeting. You know, on a topic they're particularly engaged with and people who are regular attendees. I think we can expect more of people who are regular attendees. We can expect more of people who sit on other committees, um, but we should expect the most of us and, uh, whatever. Whatever the unacceptable behavior is elsewhere. I should definitely avoid, uh, cases where I descend to that same level of behavior. So I'm gonna, I think that's a good reminder, thank you. We should all read the standard of conduct and try and make sure when we're, when we're chairs, at least make sure everyone sticks to them.
Reading through things is helpful.
Yeah, we agree.
Okay, thank you all and everyone. Uh, is anyone here for public comment? If I could go to public comment? Or wants to make one? Brian?
Uh, this is just coming off of the cuff, public comment. Um, it's gonna be a, uh, interesting January. Set of meetings coming up. I'm looking at, um. Uh, specifically, uh, who, who is going to fill various roles around the community? And speaking specifically, um, of, of some of our advisory committees here. And, um, I think we need to think as a community. Um, about who we want to have on, um, these advisory boards, because they are. Uh, an integral part in how GBOS, um, operates. So, um, and I'm, I'm speaking most specifically about the land use committee. I see a, um. I, I see a bit of a vacuum going on there and, uh, I'm not quite sure how to express it or, or what. Uh, what we can do as, as GBOS, but I want to make sure that, uh. We have a, uh, a good continuing, um, group. Uh, sharing the GB, or the LUC meetings. That's my comment.
Any other public comments? Till afternoon, I guess? No other public comment? I didn't entertain a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned.